Why don't you have to sit right here?
Do we have time?
No, it's fine.
Let's start.
Great.
Hi, I'm Jorge.
How's it going?
Hi, so I'm Jorge.
Hi, so I'm Jorge.
Welcome.
We'll finish up afterwards.
Hi.
Bye.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our nice sunny evening. For those of us that like rain, so we're a dig, those that don't, oh well. The plants are getting watered. Call this meeting of the Wood Sockit School Committee for Order on August 17, 2019, at 7:01 PM. Roll call Dr. McGee.
Chairman Jorge.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Kaviskas.
Here.
Mrs. Nate always has an absentee.
Excuse my absence. Will you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and applause? And for their allegiance, we will fly the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and justice for all. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee? Please come to the podium, state your name, and address with a record, please.
Good evening, my name is Mary Varr. I am 403 over in the road in Vanville. I am the Executive Director for Wood and Sockit Head Start. And I just wanted to publicly thank the school system for all of their hard work that has gone on this past year in supporting our youngest learners in early childhood. We've been working very closely with the Special Ed Department, with Literacy Department, and have worked collaboratively to come up with some amazing goals that I truly believe will help their grade reading scores down the road, chronic absenteeism in Wood Sockit, and will help with our transitions from our early childhood parents into the school system. So we look forward to continuing to work together, and I really can't help your administrative staff enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? There are none, Dr. McGee. Recognitions and announcements.
I have none this evening.
You have none? I have one. The Sockit High School football team is holding a pasta dinner night at Paul St. Parish Hall, and that's going to be held on September 21st, 2019, so this coming September. It's going to be hosted by the Knights of Columbus in Sockit, and we'll have further details as we get closer. But this dinner will be held to support the high school football team. That's all I have. Do I have a motion to receive and place on file the recognition and announcements?
Motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Kaviskas, second line, Mrs. Capwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go on to the approval of minutes. I'll make the motion to approve the June 26, 2019 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. Any additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, roll call for Dr. McGee.
Chairman Jorge.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
The same.
Mrs. Kaviskas.
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make the motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. Any items that any committee member would like to take out of order or discuss? There are none, roll call for Dr. McGee.
Chairman Jorge.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas.
Yes.
We've got no communications. I'll ask Mrs. Kaviskas to give us a report from C-Lab.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you may know, I'm a former Chair of the C-Lab and currently the school committee liaison with the C-Lab. Unfortunately, the Chair of the C-Lab was unable to come tonight. She has a class at 5:30 on Wednesdays, so she was unable to be here. I did provide to Ms. Blaze was kind enough to share with everybody, including the Google Drive, the annual report of the C-Lab, which includes a copy of every agenda, a copy of the attendance sheets, a copy of the minutes, and there's a cover letter that summarizes the activities of the C-Lab, the presentations that have been made throughout the year. The C-Lab meets with us every first Thursday of the month. There are some exceptions to that when we have conflicts with other meetings we need to attend. Typically, November and May, when we have SHON, Special Education Advisory Network meetings. But this last year was a unique case. The elements are new. Last year was a unique, this past year was a unique case in that in September, we canceled our meeting. Usually, we cancel for snow in the winter, but we canceled our meeting in September because of the excessive heat, which is what we're having right now, which made our room there be 124, just unbearable. Other than that, the C-Lab met every other month on the first Thursday, the exception of November, moved our meetings. If anybody's interested in seeing the report, provide me with your email address that you have sent to you. It's very thick, so I didn't have copies for everybody. We had a presentation at just about every meeting on such diverse matters as the Wood Sockit Middle School, the yoga program, on the new report, the statewide report card system, how that information is reported back to the schools, information on the CAB, the Community Advisory Board handling, special education's involvement in that particular board. I'm trying to think of all the presenters we had. We have presenters of either committee. Oh, one of the live presenters was on the I-Explore, the Capwell's Program, the State of the Middle School and the High School, and their availability to our special ed students, as well as the changes to the portfolio requirements as they apply to both the special ed students within and out of district, as well as the students on alternate assessment of what the requirements are for them. Again, if anyone has questions, my agenda's email is available, and I can provide it to you. You can also contact me via my email, and I'd be happy to help address those questions as I was Chair for the first afternoon here before I was elected to the school committee. Thank you. And I would like to thank the school committee and their department for their support. We've had tremendous support from the administration over the last 12 plus years as Chair of the C-Lab. Superintendent has been at almost every single meeting we've had, Special Ed Director, Mrs. Morales at Serpencan has been at every single meeting, as well as some of the other subordinate positions in administration and Special Ed. We appreciate all of their support and their attendance in the mail delivery and server questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaviskas. I'll make the motion to receive and place on file the C-Lab report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're going to conferences, discussions. First, we'll have the financial update. Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In front of you, you have the May 2019 fiscal update. In front of you, you have the...
That was a technical announcement. We'll cut the microphones.
Okay.
And you'll just have to speak a little louder.
That's not a problem at all.
Right. Very good.
So in front of you, you have the May 2019 fiscal update. It's a little early to release the June 1, so we're working with a May 1. I wanted to get you an update, as there are only one meeting here in July. I think as we get into next month, we'll have the June update ready, possibly by the first group meeting in August, but I'll share that with you when it's completed. Let's talk about some financial highlights, first of all. We'll start with the revenues. The tuition side, the revenue side, excuse me. Tuitions have been billed out for the entire year at this point, and we are currently $70,000 ahead of budget due to increased enrollment. All billing has been done, sent out to the schools. Rental income is currently projected to be $104,000 ahead of budget, and our Medicaid revenue spiked at the end of the year. We were able to close out some files, pull in some additional funds. We're $545,000 ahead of budget overall on Medicaid. At this time, we have a book of transfer of $600,000 to be scheduled in order to cover our deficit. We're going to be taking that money out of our medical reserve account to establish at the close of fiscal year 18, and that will balance our budget, so we will have no deficit once that transfer is booked.
Right.
On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are $748,000 under budget at this time, and when netted with the $250,000 employee turnover allowance, the district is about $498,000 under budget. All employee contracts at this time have been caught up for fiscal year 19. Everything has been booked, everything is now part of the financials. So basically, overall, on the $43 million-plus salary line, we're about $1.5 million ahead of budget. And again, this can be attributed to vacancies that we've run during the year, and also employee turnover.
Well, think about this, that $250,000...
Correct.
Even though it's been encumbered, is that something that has been spent?
The $250,000 credit is merely a budget item.
Right.
And per UCOA, they ask that you create an employee turnover allowance, and it's budgeted as a negative number. So there's nothing, there's no expenditures applied against that line. It's just really a reflection of the budget.
But at the end of the day, it's not spent, so it's...
Well, it's really, it should be netted into the salaries.
Right.
You know, if we didn't have UCOA, we would say, hey, we're expecting $250,000 of saving because of vacant positions and employee turnover.
Correct.
I would net that number together in the budget, and you'd have one salary line. But per UCOA, they like to see that split out, so our salary line's a little bit higher, but when netted together with that employee turnover allowance, we come to true budget for salaries.
But at the end of the day, the deficit, if you would, would be less.
Yes, correct, absolutely.
That's my point.
Yes, yes.
So it's actually a budgeted item, and that's all it's reflected, whether actually on a dollar basis, on a cash basis.
Correct.
It's $250,000 more to hold.
Yes.
A surplus, a small deficit.
Yep.
Okay.
Our medical expenses are currently $873,000 over budget. We've had three excellent claims months in a row. We really reduced our overall deficit tremendously over the last few months. We knocked a little more, a little over $200,000 off of our deficit from April to May. This number is pretty close to being finalized at this point. There's one big item still to come, and that is our incurred but not yet received expenses.
Right.
In the middle of August, we received an accounting from Blue Cross on billings that were not put in for the end of the year, so we end up accruing those expenses. There's sometimes a variance on those. I know it went down a little bit last year, so there may be a small jump, but I think the performance of medical has really been great the last three months. Been really pleased with how we closed out the year. Currently, district tuitions are $842,000 over budget, and we've talked about both that and transportation ad nauseam here during these fiscal updates. Increased more students out than anticipated, and more transportation expense with those students. And finally, HVAC is on pace to be about $200,000, a little over $200,000 over budget, 205, by my estimation now. There's a little typo here in this last paragraph. Overall, this currently leaves us with a $1.32 million overall deficit. That's actually a budget-to-expension deficit. It's not the true deficit. Once you take out the $600,000 we have transferred from the medical fund, we're looking at a little under $600,000 in terms of overall deficit. I think it's around $590,000. So I think we're closing out the year pretty strongly. We've got all the contracts caught up. That's the one thing I want to emphasize. The last month, and I'd like to thank my payroll department, they've been working overtime to get the contracts straightened out and executed, but I think we're finally in a good place for those who have everybody caught up, and now we can focus on closing out the rest of the fiscal year. And that kind of leads me to my next point as well. We're actually going out to bid, just as an FYI, to the school committee. We're actually in the process of reviewing audits, audit firms for the fiscal year audit for the school department this year. I'll be meeting with city officials, Chris Chamberlain and Paul Luba, tomorrow, I believe, to review the bids that we received. The city does run the audit. We just pay our portion off of, based on what the audit results come in. So I'll be reviewing those results with them tomorrow, and we'll have an auditor selected for this upcoming fiscal year 19.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I do want to underline what you said. Our school department financial information, all the numbers that are prepared by your department, are reviewed on a monthly basis by the school committee, budget versus actual. On top of that, annually, we have the outside CPAs that audit our books and records. So there is lots of checks and balances that come that are applied to our financial situation here, both on the balance sheet side and on the operating side. So those are good controls that every department, your school department should have.
Yeah, absolutely. We run a separate audit from the city. While they run concurrently, they're two independent audits.
Right. Is there any student...
Jim.
Vice Chair Burke.
Okay. Mr. Perry, first of all, once again, congratulations and well done to you and your Halo staff catching up with all those retroactive salaries because of the contract being finalized a couple months ago. So that's, catch the bird too, so well done, good job there.
Thank you.
Second point, rental income is $104,000 ahead of budget. Waters Church obviously pays rental income to us to use this building. They will be leaving, I think by the end of the year. How much of the percentage of that rental income do you think is...
Oh, you've got a spot here.
Well, is it...
I'd say it's a significant portion of it. If I had to take a guess right now, I'd probably guess around 25%, but we actually do run a lot of different activities. We rent out the gym, there's a lot of, and that's really where we derive a lot of the rental income, from the high school gymnasium. Pretty much every weekend, we're either renting out to a dance company or another outfit of some sort to come in, use the gym, and also the auditorium as well. Those are the two really big draws in terms of rental income, and that's really where most students derive from. But the Waters Church is actually, is a portion of that as well.
Well, the car libraries, how much do they pay us for the week of the month?
I would prefer that Mr. Toriani got this. I don't know if he has an idea. I don't have an idea of that off the top of my head. The billings, they go out bi-weekly, they're handled through my accounts receivable department, and they tell me they pay the bills, they're off their accounts receivable, so I don't have that number from.
Okay.
And just to note this idea, we're talking about the expenditures. Several of them were listed, maybe you've explained it already, which is a point to hear it again. Several things were listed as over budget, over budget, over budget, over budget, but you said we do not have a deficit. Can you just explain that again?
Well, we don't have a deficit because, well, we do actually technically have a deficit. We have a $600,000 deficit, and we're actually using a fund balance transfer to balance the budget right now. But due to actually better performing rev, we perform better on the revenue side, so that's actually reduced that $1.3 million expenditure deficit substantially. And because we perform better on things like Medicaid than anticipated, and other local budget items, just to kind of talk about how I do the budget on the revenue side, I always budget revenue very conservatively, numbers I know we can hit, and then if we do get above and beyond that, we're just, it's just all gravy after that. So usually, when we come through and see the revenues, my revenues will be a little bit over the estimated value, because the last thing I want to do is build a budget based on revenue numbers that aren't reasonable. So that's why you see that deficit, and again, that $600,000 balance is going to come from that medical reserve account that we established last year. If you take out that medical overage we have this year, we're pretty much running right on budget. Kind of factor in factoring that $800,000 of medical overages we have right now. While we do have variances on different lines throughout the budget, overall, we'd be pretty much breaking even at that point.
But as we come to the end of this year, we're breaking even.
Yeah, if you're doing better on medical, yes, absolutely.
Let's take a look at where we are, right here in May. Right now, we have a $600,000 deficit that is being covered by the reserves, the balance sheet reserves, as we discussed during the negotiation process. So there is, there is a shortfall, there is a deficit, but we've got enough reserves to cover that deficit, and all the salaries from the contract for this year are booked. So taking the entire picture, we still have revenues that did better than we expected. We've got some expenditures that did worse than expected, but in medical or special ed. But when you total it all up, at the end of the day, as of the end of May, we were $600,000 or so to the whole. We took our reserves, $600,000, which is less than we thought, and that covers the shortfall, and we're actually showing a $14,000 surplus as of the end of May, which is basically a break even, a break even amount. Once Mr. Perry closes the year sometime in August, we'll have the complete picture of where we're at, and how much reserve, if any, we're going to have to take from the balance sheet to cover this year's, this year that was just closed, and how are we going to balance that? We've got plenty to balance it off. That's how it works. Mr. Capwell?
Well, Ted, and I'm not sure if this is where you are also going with this, but when you take all of the line items of the budget, and something that's somewhat uncontrollable, like medical, if you were to take that one factor out, the team has actually done an incredible job in the way that they've managed the rest of the budget in totality. And I think that's part of what you were saying.
Absolutely.
The last thing you want is to inflate your estimate of revenues and deflate expenditures, go the other way around. And Mr. Perry's department and the special ed and his folks have done a great job in monitoring those balances and making sure that all our transactions are recorded timely, which is very important.
And also, one other thing, during negotiations, we were anticipating having a deficit this year, just based on what we were dealing with, and again, when I built the budget last year, I did put in a few of some estimated numbers, and that's why you see the surplus on the salaries line, because I kind of had a number on where I wanted to get us overall. But at the end of the day, it was really medical, and also the overages on out of districts and transportation that really kind of pulled us back the other way.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? I'll make a motion to accept the financial report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go to the 3K expansion. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to start by thanking Mary Varr from Wood Sockit Head Start for her just incredible work and collaboration with our district to make this, this expansion of our 3K hospital in Wood Sockit. As she stated a few minutes ago, we will see the results as we begin this expansion of 3K in the fall, in terms of reading scores, math scores, and things of that nature. Mrs. Morel, here this evening, has done a tremendous amount of work, as has Mrs. Doriso and other administrators, Mrs. Moby, and some others who just worked really hard to make this a possibility. But Mrs. Morel is going to explain to you what we're going to see, and you're going to see what the community is going to see with respect to the expansion here in Sockit. So, Miss Morel.
So Janet and I have been working with Ruth Palucci from Ride.
Try to speak louder.
Sorry.
Really loud.
I'll protect my voice.
Wonderful.
So Janet and I have been working the last two years with Ruth Palucci from Ride to better support our 3K students at Hope Year and in the community. With that said, we have trained all of our special education staff in the itinerary model over the last year, and have been implementing this model in the community at the local Head Starts. With that said, we've seen tremendous collaboration with our staff, as well as the Head Start community for our students. We've had some students that have left our Hope Year classrooms and have attended Head Start and have done a tremendous job there. With that said, we had some bumps in the road with the implementation this year, that we were able to work very collaboratively together and work out those wrinkles. This coming year, we are flipping our classrooms at Hope Year with the help from the governor's budget with providing more classrooms to Head Start. We are anticipating two state-funded universal 3K classrooms in our building that will be run by Head Start, but we will be supplying our support in those classrooms for the special education services. And Wood Sockit Education Partner will also have our own two classrooms there as well. The classrooms are going to be inclusion classrooms, using the itinerary model support in there, where they are collectively working with the classroom teacher and implementing the services every day, all day, instead of the speech pathologist going into the classroom, pulling the child out for 30 minutes, working on a skill, and returning the child back, and then the teacher really doesn't know what they worked on. So they have collaborative meetings with the special education staff to help the educators implement the services that the child needs every day, all day, so that way they're more prepared, and they are learning the skill more than just that 30-minute block. We've been working very closely with the state on improving this model, as well as Mrs. Doriso working with Head Start with the K Grandpa program. So we kind of collaboratively came together in both programs, where we would have typical developing peers alongside of our students that may have disability. So hopefully, they work well. We'll see.
Is this going to start in September?
We have every, we have every plan of working to have this start in September. We have gone through one round of a lottery, where we're encouraging our parents from Hope Year, as well as the community, to apply for the universal 3K. There is a second lottery that just opened again because of the budget being approved after the first lottery had launched. We had to do a second lottery because we're adding four more classrooms, so that's 72 more seats that we're adding. So with that, the second lottery closes July 30th. So after that, we'll have all of the students' names. We'll be going through, making sure all the students that have a spot now has a spot for September, as well as having some openings for new students that may need services throughout the year.
Do we have all the teachers and classrooms ready to go for this?
We're working on that.
Are we not displacing, are we not displacing some other classrooms?
So we had four self-contained 3K classrooms. So we did displace some teachers, however, our self-contained teachers turned into itinerary special educators, so everyone's still in, having a job.
Expenditure deficit, uh, substantial. And because we perform better on things like Medicaid than anticipated, um, and in other local, uh, budget items, just to kind of talk about how I do the budget on the revenue side, I always budget revenue very conservatively, numbers I know we can hit. And then if we do get above and beyond that, we're just, it's just all gravy after, after that. So usually when we come through and see the revenues, my revenues will be a little bit over the estim- estimated values because the last thing I want to do is build a budget based on revenue numbers that, that aren't reasonable. So that's why you see that deficit. And again, that $600,000 balance is going to come from that medical reserve account that we established last year. If you take out that medical overage we have this year, we're pretty much running right on budget. If you kind of factor in factoring that $800,000 of medical overages we have right now, while we do have variances on different lines throughout the, uh, throughout the budget, overall, we'd be pretty much breaking even at that point.
It doesn't come to the end of this year, we're, we're breaking even.
Yeah, if, if, if you're doing better on medical, yes, absolutely.
Let's take a look at where we are right here in May. Right now, we have a $600,000 deficit that is being covered by the reserves, the balance sheet reserves, as we, as we discussed during the negotiation process. So there is, there is a shortfall, there is a deficit. But we've got enough reserves to cover that deficit. And all the salaries from the contract for this year are worth it. So taking the entire picture, we still have revenues that did better than we expected. We've got some expended expenditures that did worse than expected, but in medical, especially. But when you total it all up, at the end of the, at the end of the day, as of the end of May, we were $600,000 or so to the whole. We took our reserves, $600,000, which is less than we thought, and that covers the shortfall. And we're actually showing a $14,000 surplus as of the end of May, which is basically a break even, a break even amount. Once Mr. Perry closes the year sometime in August, we'll have the complete picture of where we're at. And how much reserve, if any, we're going to have to take from the balance sheet to cover this year's, this, this year that was just closed. And how are we going to balance that? We've got plenty to balance it off. That's how it works.
Well, Ted, and I'm not sure if this is where you are also going with this, but when you take all of the line items of the budget and something that's somewhat uncontrollable, like medical, if you were to take that one factor out, the team has actually done an incredible job in the way that they've, um, managed good the rest of the budget in totality. And, and I, I think that's part of what you were saying.
The last thing you want is to inflate your estimate of revenues and deflate expenditures, go the other way around. And Mr. Perry's department and the special ed and his folks have done a great job in monitoring those balances and making sure that all our transactions are recorded timely, which is very important.
And also one other thing, during negotiations, we were anticipating having a deficit this year, just based on what we were dealing with. And again, when I built the budget last year, I did put in a few, uh, some estimated numbers. And that's why you see the surplus on the salaries line because I kind of had a number on where I wanted to get us overall. But at the end of the day, it was really medical and also the overages on added districts and transportation that really kind of pulled us back the other way.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? I'll make a motion to accept the financial report. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go to the 3K expansion, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I want to start by, um, thanking, uh, Mary Farr from Wintucket Head Start for, for her just incredible, um, work and collaboration with, with our district to, to make this, uh, this expansion of our 3K possibility here in Wintucket. As she stated, uh, a few minutes ago, we, we will see the results, um, as, as we, you know, begin this expansion of 3K in the fall, um, in terms of new scores, math scores, and things of that nature. Ms. Farrell here this evening has, has done a tremendous amount of work, as, as, um, Mrs. Doriso and, um, other administrators, uh, Miss Moby's, um, and some others who, um, just worked really hard to, to make this a possibility. But, uh, Ms. Farrell is going to explain to you, uh, what we're going to see and you're going to see what the community is going to see with respect to the, the expansion here in Wintucket. So Ms. Farrell.
So Janet and I have been working, um, with Ruth Lucci from the state, um, for RIDE.
Try to speak louder.
Sorry.
Really loud, really loud.
I'll protect my voice.
Wonderful.
So Janet and I have been working the last two years with, uh, Ruth Lucci from RIDE, uh, to better support our 3K students, um, at Hope Year, uh, and in the community. With that said, we have trained all of our, um, special education, um, staff, uh, in the itinerary model over the last year and have been implementing this model in the community at the local Head Start. With that said, we've seen tremendous, um, collaboration with our staff as well as the Head Start community, um, for our students. Um, we've had some students that have left our, um, Hope Year classrooms and have attended Head Start and have done a tremendous job there. With that said, we had, um, some bumps in the road with the implementation this year, um, that we were able to work very collaboratively together and work out those wrinkles. Uh, this coming year, we are, um, flipping our classrooms at Hope Year with the, um, help from the governor's, um, uh, budget with providing more classrooms to Head Start. We are anticipating two state-funded, um, universal 3K classrooms in our building, um, that will be run by Head Start, but we will be supplying our, um, support in those classrooms for the special education services. Um, and Wintucket Education Department will also have our own two classrooms there as well. Um, the classrooms are going to be inclusion classrooms, um, using the itinerary model support in there where they are collectively working with the classroom teacher and implementing the services every day, all day, instead of the speech pathologist going into the classroom, pulling the child out for 30 minutes, working on a skill and returning the child back, and then the teacher really doesn't know what they worked on. Uh, so they have collaborative meetings with the special education staff to help the educators implement, um, the services that the child needs every day, all day. Um, so that way they're, they're more prepared and they are learning the skill more than just that 30-minute block. Um, we've been working very closely with the state on improving this model, um, as well as, um, Mrs. Doriso working with Head Start with the, um, K Grandoff program. Um, so we kind of collaboratively came together in both programs where we would have typical developing peers alongside of our students, um, that may have disability. Um, so hopefully they work well. We'll see.
Is this going to start in September?
Uh, we have every, we have every plan of working, um, to have this start in September. Um, we have gone through one round of a lottery where, um, we're encouraging our parents from Hope Year as well as the community to apply for the universal 3K. Um, there is a second lottery that just opened again, um, because of the budget being approved after the first lottery had launched. We had to do a second lottery, um, because we're, um, adding four more classrooms. So that's 72 more seats, um, that we're adding. So with that, the second lottery closes July 30th. Uh, so after that, we'll have all of the students' names. Uh, we'll be going through, making sure all the students that have a spot now has a spot for September, um, as well as having some openings for new students that may need services.
Do we have all the teachers and classrooms ready to go for this?
We're working on that.
Are we not displacing, are we not displacing some other classrooms?
Uh, so we had four self-contained 3K classrooms. So we did displace some teachers. However, um, our self-contained teachers turned into itinerary special educators. Um, so this, everyone's still in, having a job. Um, two of our, um, TAs were displaced, actually all four were, but if they choose to go into the classrooms that we're opening, they can. And then the others, there are other positions that we still have available, um, through the job fair that they, they took, they have in August. Um, and then with the teachers, um, we haven't displaced any. So the four classrooms are still going to be four 3K classrooms. Just two will be run by Head Start and two would be run by the school department.
Any comments, questions? I'll make the motion to receive and place on file. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll have our facilities update. Ms. Matariani, please.
Yeah, so I've compiled a list of projects, of the major projects we're undertaking in the district during the summer. Starting off with one of the bigger ones is the Savoy Window Boiler project. We're replacing all of the windows and the boilers with heating system. And we're updating the front entrance in anticipation for building some security updates. That particular project is running on schedule. The windows and the front, uh, entrance will be completed by the third, uh, week of August. And the boiler will be, um, including the cleanup will be done by the first, possibly second of September, ready time for the heating season. The Saka High, Saka High School hallway heating unit update. Um, we have some heating units that are outdated in the hallways at Saka High School. We're currently working with a heating vendor to upgrade the systems in anticipation for the upcoming winter months. At Governor Hope Year Elementary School outside where the 3K area was, was indicated, um, we have some drainage issues. We are currently waiting to pricing this week to repair, replace the drainage around the, um, this public 3K, um, playground. We're also in anticipation of the coverage initiative. We're installing some classroom upgrades, particularly some restroom upgrades for these 3K classrooms we just spoke about. At Harris Elementary School, we're looking to repair some drainage issues that happen or occur outside the playground area in the back entrance. Then we participated in a meeting with RIDE this week where we're, we're looking to, um, install a playground at Savoy Elementary School. We anticipate that we'll be putting out a bid on the new school playground, um, towards the end of the summer into the beginning of school year. We're also looking at playgrounds for the upcoming summer at Citizens Elementary School and potentially at Coleman Elementary School. Um, those are still kind of in the planning stage, but we're anticipating the most possible for the summer 2020. At the heat administration, the heating units are coming in. And I believe Dr. McGee has a further update with the agenda, but I would say the heating units, the heat distribution units are in and they're going to be installed in the next couple of weeks. How can we, uh, rate further? Um, last for facilities, we've installed carbon dioxide detectors in all of the boiler rooms here in the district. We're still awaiting some guidance from the State Fire Marshal's Office for anticipation. In its proportion, we want to install, um, electrical, um, carbon dioxide detectors with a backup battery. In terms of the studio services, the summer cleaning is going on schedule. Classes will be cleaned and we anticipate that we'll be no issues opening the doors in terms of cleaning. Transportation, um, well, we haven't identified a new site manager. There is a new general manager for Durham Transportation Services. And so we have a new general manager in the area. Dr. McGee and I met with the general manager yesterday to discuss, um, some initiatives and improvements to the services we're receiving from Durham. Um, they, they leadership's been aware of some of the difficulties and concerns we've had. And they've assured us that they really see the process changes going forward in the studio. And I can tell you, we're, we're in our second or third pivot to this year. And we're already, um, seeing the buses in the running on time. And we're doing what we're supposed to do, but we're not doing it closely. And last thing on transportation, we are still in the process of getting them selected. We're in the process of negotiating a contract with Durham, um, which we'll have further details in a couple of minutes. So, that, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments on facilities, Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke. Um, well, I, I want to say that was nice to see the article in the call about the active work being done that is important, right?
Yes.
Perry did a nice job and he reflected quite well the work that was done. I'm going to suggest that we, hopefully, we can get the report back, the story of what your job is completing. So obviously we can send that out to the, to the community so they can see the good work that was done, obviously. So, uh, Perry, yeah. Talk to your sources, okay? But that was very good. That was very good to be there. So, good job. Uh, my other question though is, um, do we all stay in Durham?
Yes, we are.
Okay, because we had talked about something else and now we're just.
The contract for the early comp is outrageous. They don't know the district and we would have lost time just in teaching and getting the roots together and the, and the sense of facilities.
And have you addressed, have you addressed some of the problems that you had with Durham last year?
Yes, Mr. Burke, we've outlined some of the issues, um, the bunch of cars to ride on the bus.
Yeah, you were saying to Matariani.
So yes, we've addressed some of the issues with them. We've gone out and observed the buses, looked at them, we've inspected them, we've spoken with the drivers. We initiated a change in leadership. So one of the articles for the contract that expires June 30th allowed us to request, um, staffing changes. So we initiated that request and they, they honored it. So they, they've more or less transferred the previous management somewhere else in Durham. We're getting, uh, so I, I think based on the meeting we had with Durham, Dr. McGee earlier this week, that they, they clearly understand that they are under the microscope and there's, there's a certain expectation that they.
So they're also involved with some benchmarks where they have to prove themselves.
So we're looking twofold. Looking, one, to build some things in potentially into the contract, which we discussed at another meeting. And also, yes, there's some expectations that are set. I mean, I don't think they're high expectations. We're expecting the buses to be on time to deliver our students where they, to their destination. And, um, we're expecting them to do it on clean buses that are running and everything's working appropriately. I think it's, it's not a very high bar. And, um, so we'll be monitoring what they're doing closely. And I think we'll probably meet on a regular basis with them. Unlike last year where we, they just kind of ran on autopilot the way they've always done. I think this year they're going to probably meet on a bi-month basis, just in the beginning to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
I think the facilities committee, subcommittee meeting, it was discussed that in finalizing this contract, consideration should be made or at least investigated to see if we need to identify penalties for non-performance. And the discussion would involve obviously the administration, including our attorney, to take a look at that and look at experience in other, another district. Because we cannot afford to go through the mess that we went through this year. And for them to say, well, oh, well, we'll do better as we go along. That was unsatisfactory this year. So I don't know how we handle that, but I think you have to take a harder line. You know, just getting rid of people or changing people doesn't cut it. When we've got kids who are not picked up on time in the winter or not dropped off on time or all the other issues that we had to suffer this year. I think that has to be worked out before that contract is finalized. Good one. Anything else?
Mike, we have one last question. I know I don't have the answer to it, but I could have asked it anyway for the best. We're both listening. The new playgrounds, ADA compliant, correct?
Miss Cepiscus, yes, the new playgrounds will be ADA compliant. It's a requirement, uh, under the new bill regulations, it's a requirement. So we will make sure that they're, we're also continuing to pursue looking at the existing playgrounds that, that have some work.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make the motion to receive and place on file the facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go to the administrative retreat. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the annual Saka Education Department Administrator's Retreat, which includes all directors, all principals, all assistant principals, will be held this, uh, summer on August 20th. And it's going to be, uh, from eight thirty, 4:00 PM at Bryan University. I had the opportunity to, uh, work with the, uh, folks from the Hassanfeld Institute at Bryan, uh, the Hassanfeld Institute for Leadership. So we, uh, we sat down, we had a, a few meetings and came up with the agenda, which I think is going to be, uh, a, a great agenda for all of the fall. The agenda will include, um, a session, maybe two sessions, actually, sorry, three sessions. The morning session will be, um, discussing, uh, focus on, uh, team building, qualities of great leaders, creating a high engagement workplace and managing difficult conversations. Uh, the afternoon sessions will be focusing on mapping stakeholders, building trust and loyalty, using common messaging to communicate a wide range of constituents within the community. And the final session will showcase the district's achievements over the last year as well as review the district's new programs and initiatives from 2019 to 2020. So again, looking forward to, uh, a good, uh, day of collaboration and planning for the upcoming year.
Dr. McGee, did you, maybe I missed it, does that include setting goals?
It, it, yes, it does. Yeah, the new programs and initiatives and goals, yes. So that, that's all sort of what we're saying, yes.
Any comments, questions? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, uh, this, we initiate the treaty report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go, we'll go into unfinished business. Uh, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Warran, uh, the Warran Student Survey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mrs. Cepiscus. Uh, we've had this on, on, uh, we discussed this in the past. Are there any further questions, comments on this? Vice Chair Burke? Yes, it's been tabled.
Do you have to take it off the table?
Um, yes, we do. All right, so I'll make a motion to take it off the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Boje, yes. Vice Chair Burke, yes. Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Cepiscus.
Yes.
Okay, now we, we can discuss it. Are there any questions? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Boje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into new business. Uh, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Warran Student Survey. Is there a second either? My God, we have it twice. Maybe we should vote on it twice. No, maybe we won't. Let's go to the next one. Uh, we go, just, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the revisions to the 2019. Where did we miss?
We missed the ESL.
It's not there. I'm going to go on my notes. It's not, it's not there. Here we go. Different, different screen, different things. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of ESL coordinator. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Ms. Catwell and Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. I am pleased to recommend Ms. Rania Gia for the position of English Language Learners Coordinator for the Wintucket Education Department. Uh, Ms. Gia has worked for the Wintucket Education Department since January of 2008. She holds a bachelor's degree in Communications in Elementary Education and a master's of education in Teaching English in the Second Generation. During her course of employment here in Wintucket, Ms. Gia has worked as an ESL teacher, uh, for adding on additional responsibilities last year, uh, in which she became a part-time program coordinator for the English Language Learners Department. While working in Wintucket, she's called on to be a mentor and an after-school secondary ESL literacy program instructor. Ms. Gia is highly qualified for ESL for the RIDE regulations and holds a professional license. Ms. Gia has been doing a great job as a part-time ESL coordinator here in our district. Therefore, it is my recommendation that she continue her work full-time in that position as English Language Learners Coordinator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments, discussion, uh, Mr. Chairman? Vice Chair Burke?
Is this a new position?
So this position is, um, it, it is a new position. It's a position that we budgeted for, um, I want to say, two school committee meetings ago. Um, we, we had this on the agenda. So what, what we're basically doing is, uh, Ms. Gia was doing this job, um, point four, uh, last year. And the RIDE regulations state that a district that has, um, a certain number of English language learners has to have a full-time person in this particular position. So this is, um, this is the reason that we're going from, that we're going from a part-time to a full-time coordinator position.
It's the following, it's a semantics, it's a ESL program coordinator. That doesn't exist, does it?
Well, it, it, it exists in, it's, it's a full-time position.
Out of the ESL board.
Exactly, yes. She, she is, she is here, yes.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Boje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Cepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the vision to the 2019, uh, Wintucket School Committee Annual Calendar. I think we're moving, uh, looking to move, uh, the October 23rd meeting to October 30th. That's the change. Any comments? Yes. I made a motion. Is there a second? Second made by Mrs. Mrs. Catwell. Any discussion?
Chair.
Vice Chair Burke?
My question is why? What, what's going on a week before?
There's an event that we've got to be at, and, uh, Mr. Hall.
Okay, okay, all right, now I understand.
Dr. McGee is being honored. He knows, it's not a surprise. So it would be, yes, since he cannot be here, uh, it would be nice if we attended. Uh, and so we will move, we'll move, we would love to move the meeting to October 30th and the night before Halloween.
Sounds good. I think I'm blushing, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay, you all have to say true to true. That would be okay. Any discussion? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Boje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Cepiscus.
That's good. Uh, next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the 2020, uh, Wintucket School Committee, uh, calendar. Is there a second? Second made by Mrs. Cepiscus and Mrs. Catwell. Any discussion? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Boje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Cepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I will make a motion to discuss and approve the elimination of the Assistant Superintendent position. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. Any discussion? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Boje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Cepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the creation of the Director of Curriculum and Development position. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mrs. Catwell. Is there, Dr. McGee?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so the, uh, in light of the elimination of the, uh, position of the Assistant Superintendent, uh, we are requesting the creation of the Director of Curriculum and Development. This, this person, the role and responsibility, or the roles and responsibilities of this person would be to oversee the curriculum across the Wintucket Education Department as well as oversee, um, other, uh, other areas that are, that are related to curriculum such as, uh, five oh four and, uh, professional development and, and instruction and assessment as well.
Any discussion, comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Boje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Catwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Cepiscus.
The next item, um, discussion approval of the appointment of a Director of Curriculum. At this point, do we need to table this?
Yes, we do.
And can we table this, not just the next meeting, but the second meeting of August, can we do that?
Yep.
Instead of tabling it for one meeting, we'd like to table it for two years.
Table it and then take it off the table and then.
Well, we want to take it off.
Let's go. If, if, if we could table it to the next meeting and that, and that being determined, whether we need to table it to the last meeting in August, that would be preferable.
Fine.
All right. You want, you have somebody who wants to take it off the board.
Correct, yes, yes. Yes.
But I thought he was going to take it off.
It'd be, it'd be...
Okay.
Yes, it'd be...
All right. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of the, or to table the appointment of the Director of Curriculum and Development to our next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee.
Chair. Chair. Chairman Bojai.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the elimination of the Secretary to the Assistant Superintendent position. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mrs. Capwell. Any discussion? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bojai.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the creation of the Secretary to the Director of Curriculum and Development position. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Burke. Any discussion? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojai.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the school committee, I am very pleased to announce that 98% of the staff in the McPhee Administration Building have returned to the McPhee Administration Building. There are just a few that will be moved over, I believe, next week. By the end of next week, everybody will be in the, in that building. The units that were, that have been ordered, the rooftop units, the aged bathrooms, are in. They're not here in the district, but a schedule will be coordinated with Mr. Tarianni and his facilities department as to when they will actually be delivered to McPhee and installed. But they are, they have been delivered to the public building and installed. In an effort for us to, because we've been able to move into McPhee, over the last couple of weeks, we had to make sure there was hot water because, and you may or may not know, the boiler in the basement, the old boiler was removed. And we had to make sure that we had hot water. So what Mr. Tarianni's department did was they installed a hot water tank so that here was hot water throughout the building. There has been hot water, so everyone's been back. Boiler has been, the boiler has been installed, and we're just very, very excited and continuing to move people around. So it's been far much over some different locations at McPhee, and very excited that everyone's there. So, thank you.
Any comments, questions?
That's a great idea, Mr. Burke. Thank you. Thank you. I, yes. So yes, I would like to thank Wensacat High School for opening their arms to us. And most of McPhee, which relocated to the second floor library and the high school. I'd also like to thank Hamlet Middle School, Villanueva Middle School for opening their arms to us. And just making a difficult transition, a pretty smooth transition. So, and really, in all, you know, honesty, it's a testament to the district and how we all band together and work together. When times get tough, we work together, and that's what this district has dreamed of. So I want to thank them all for opening their doors to us.
That's very nice. I'm sure there may be some people of both extinctions are glad and believing in that.
Well, that's, that's probably true also.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I'll make a motion to receive the superintendent's reports. Is there a second?
Can I ask one selfish question first?
Oh, sure. Ask the way.
My selfish question is, is special ed still on the third floor?
They are. Yes. Yes.
Come on, Ken.